For April 25th, 2016, if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a public hearing this evening.
The public hearing is to consider various text amendments to the following sections of the Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio. That is 12104, 12304, 12504, 12704, 13304, 13504, 13704, 14714C, 14714F, 111, 111305M, and 115304A. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of this public hearing, in the public hearing? Mr. Mendel?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. This is the result of a Planning Commission recommendation from their January 14th, 2016 meeting. They recommended these, the changes outlined in the packet for these various sections of the zoning code. This group of text amendments are really just kind of housekeeping items, spelling corrections, missed terms that don't, no longer have any underlying process, or references to zoning districts that we haven't had for 20 years, just kind of leftover pieces that need to be cleaned out that were overlooked when we went through the 2014 update to the zoning code. And this is a typical thing when you do a large-scale update to a zoning code. So I would recommend that we continue forward and approve these amendments as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Is anybody else that wishes to speak in favor of the text amendments? Is there anybody that wishes to speak against the text amendments? Hearing done, the public hearing is closed. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Colosar?
Here.
Lamb?
Here.
Rose?
Here.
Shields?
Here.
Simpson?
Here.
Coin?
Here.
Hilbert?
Here.
Ringing in the minutes?
Mr. President. Shields, I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of April 11, 2016 is prepared and submitted by the clerk. Be approved.
Second. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee prior to council will meet again in two weeks and has several items on the agenda. Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Colosar?
Thank you, Mr. President. We don't have a meeting scheduled at this point, but I do want to make a quick announcement. At our last meeting, we had representation from various agencies, the Police Department, and in reference to the heroin and opiate abuse in our community and in the county. And a couple of discussions we talked about is just raising awareness. And I guess right at this time, I just want to ask that, you know, one of the things we did talk about is the disposal of medication, old medication. And I just ask community, if you do have old medication out there and you want to dispose of it properly, to go to the Medina County Drug Abuse Commission or McDAC website, which is www.mcdac.com, which will show you different locations where you can dispose of your unused medication properly so it doesn't get in the wrong hands. And also reaching out to the community that if you have any suspicion or any idea that this possibly, this type of abuse is going on, to reach out to our Police Department or any other agencies, or contact one of your councilmen, just like I had one of the representatives in my ward get to me, contacted me last week about suspicion of things going on that they'd like the community to look into. I reach out to everybody to try to make a difference in the community and see if we can altogether try to stomp out this epidemic that's happening in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no meeting held.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Streets and Sidewalks had a meeting last week. There was a few things discussed, and there's nothing else scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Water and Utilities, Mr. Hilbert?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
And Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, but we do, I'm trying to get a meeting scheduled the first two weeks of May so we can continue our discussion.
Thank you. Request for council action, we have several for Finance. We have 1662 requests for track funding for State Route 18 corridor improvement project, 1663 fiscal year 2016 CHIP grant partnership agreement and CT consultant agreement, 1664 amending CCF Medina Hospital and MRCR health and fitness agreement, 1665 change order for fiscal year 2014 CHIP 355 Gerald Boulevard Brunswick, 1666 copier purchase, 1667 bids for West Smith Road reconstruction, 1668 bids for 2016 concrete street repair, 1669 amending ordinance 1215 front city cemetery lease agreement, 1670 construct six-foot-wide sidewalk along Ryan Road, 1671 amending Planning and Zoning Code various text amendments, 1672 expenditure over 15,000 for Commercial Fitness Solutions MRCRC, and 1673 bicentennial pavers. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder, there's a group in town that's canvassing the city for legislative and political advocacy and education for the upcoming elections. They started in January and likely to go through November. And they plan to be in town from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM Monday through Friday, and from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM on weekends. The actions that they're taking are constitutionally protected and don't fall within our solicitors' ordinance, therefore, they can do it beyond the hours of our ordinance as well as on the weekends. On Tuesday, April 19th, at 4:00 PM, Councilman Shields representing the schools, Dave Knight representing the schools, and I, we're at the hospital and the American Heart Association presented us plaques for the Healthy Medina Program as Gold Fit Friendly Work Site as well as Community Innovation Award. And they presented us a plaque, which is on the wall here by the poster, as well as for the hospital and the schools. Mod, I'm sorry, Modville Township is having an open house this coming Sunday, May 1st, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM to show the public their new service garage and administrative offices. The ribbon cutting will be at 2:00 PM. The address is 6665 Wadsworth Road at the corner of Poe and Wadsworth. The National Day of Prayer events will be Thursday, May 5th, which is a week from this coming Thursday. At 7:00 AM, the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at Williams on the Lake. That's the only thing there's a charge for, $15 tickets, $15 per ticket for the prayer breakfast, just to cover the cost of the food and the room. The noon prayer service on the square will have youth from both St. Francis and Medina Christian Academy Schools. In case of rain, they will move that ceremony inside the UCC Church at the northeast corner of the square. And then a 7:00 PM evening prayer service will be at the Church of the Nazarene at 6901 Worcester Pike Road at 7:00 PM. And that's that. And then last but not least, Saturday, May 7th, we're again working with the local churches to provide the Love Medina Program. And that's where disabled and senior, disabled folks and senior citizens send in a application with request for yard work, painting, mulch, picking up leaves or trash. They send them in, they're assigned to the various churches, they meet at our city garage, have kind of a prayer and a kickoff from there, and then they go out and work through the morning, just kind of helping these folks out. It's been a great program. It's probably our fourth or fifth year doing it, and the people are very appreciative of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, we had a budget hearing on April 20th. That was also the date the revenue estimate for the next set of budgets went out to the various department heads, and those will be before council in June. And there's one item later on the agenda that came from Finance. I'll speak to that when we get there.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, other than mentioning that there are two ordinances that authorize bids at the Medina Municipal Airport for work that hopefully will be completed in the near future, and I can address those at that time.
Thank you. Chief Bear Dooty, please, Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, the Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll change it up. This Thursday, April 28th, the City of Medina will be celebrating Arbor Day. The Medina Kiwanis Club will be distributing 600 Colorado Blue Spruce Trees to the third graders at Medina City Schools, Medina Christian Academy, and St. Francis. The top three third graders from every school will be selected based on their projects, and they will be invited to Williams on the Lake to present their projects to the Kiwanis on Thursday as part of the Arbor Day program. Secondly, I would like to thank Mark Colosar and Keith Durham for organizing the Earth Day event at Sam Macy Park in the Koo and Todd Conservation Area. They help plant trees, wildflowers, as well as milkweed in two different areas at those parks. And then finally, the Forestry Department will be removing the ornamental pear trees on South Court Street between Washington and Smith Road the week of May 2nd. Those trees have been declining due to fire blight. The Shade Tree Commission discussed a replacement plan, and we will be notifying the businesses along those streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gladys, Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you. Two of our projects, our active projects recently went into their next phase of construction. The first is Huntington Street, the project to reconstruct it. Today, April 25th, we started the pavement removal process. This will be followed right up with soil stabilization for the next couple of weeks then, that the folks there are going to be a little bit frustrated, I'm sure, but we appreciate their patience. Ryan Road is entering that same phase. They're scheduled to start Wednesday, that is weather depending, but either way, it'll be shortly after that. Thank you.
Mr. McCully, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. A brief, last council meeting, Councilman Rose talked about a gentleman who gathered a group to volunteer, and I apologize, Mr. Rose, I didn't know if I responded to you with the amount of trash that was picked up. Thought there was going to be a minimum amount, and ended up being 50 bags. It was about six yards of waste that this group picked up, so we're very appreciative and kind of sad that there was that much strewn throughout the area, but great effort by some volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of mayoral appointments? We have three of them. If there's no objection, I'd like to vote all three at once. Is there any objection? We have the Uptown Park Advisory Committee, Robert Molnar, expiring for 12/31/19. The Board of Zoning Appeals, Paul Rozak, term expiring 12/31/18. And the Board of Zoning Appeals alternate, Sam Livingston, for a term expiring 12/31/19.
Move to confirm the mayoral appointments?
Second. Any discussion on the confirmation of the mayoral appointments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Notice this communications petitions, there's non-unfinished business, non-introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair in a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address, or it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 50-16, a resolution expressing the sense of the mayor and council of the City of Medina, Ohio to public servants should be commended for their dedication and continued service during the Public Service Recognition Week.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion. Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, President Coin. I appreciate council doing this. The federal government has set aside a week where public employees should be recognized, and we talked many times of the dedication and value and commitment of our public, of our staff, our coworkers, and we didn't want to miss this opportunity to publicly recognize them, and I thank Mr. Coin for submitting this.
Thank you, and we would agree, I guess, as a council as a whole, that the dedication of the employees, of the City of Medina employees, of all public entities as well, I guess the gratitude is there, and we appreciate all the time and effort that's put in, even though sometimes that Mr. McCully could be difficult, we do appreciate his service. I didn't want to point him out, but I guess it does lend itself to that. But again, we appreciate all the help. Please call the roll?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Resolution 50-16 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 5116, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an amendment, number six, to the agreement with Delta Airport Consultants, Inc., for the design and bidding services for the reconstruction of the north-south taxiway at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
Emergence clause been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause? Discussion on emergency clause and/or the ordinance. Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance involves two projects that are proposed at the Medina Municipal Airport. The first project concerns repaving the north-south taxiway that runs along the west side of the north-south runway. The City of Medina is receiving the benefit from the state of Ohio of a grant in the amount of approximately $650,000 to assist for the cost of that resurfacing. The second project involves resurfacing the transient airplane parking area. The FAA requested that we complete this work, and the City of Medina is receiving the benefit from the FAA in the amount of approximately $400,000 in grant money for that work. The cities match in order to receive these grants comes to a sum of approximately $65,000. The benefit to the city from the state of Ohio and from the federal government for these grants is great because the work that needs to be completed really needs to be completed soon. The requirement with respect to this work is that we bid these projects by mid-May, and as a consequence, we're asking that the emergency clause be utilized so that we can let these projects for bid as soon as possible. The first statute, ordinance 51, concerns hiring Delta consultants to design the project which is, needs to be completed, and then bid. And the next two ordinance, ordinances, 52 and 53, concern bidding the transient parking way and bidding the north-south taxiway repaving project.
Thank you. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 51-16 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 5216, ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and awarded contract to the successful bidder for the rehabilitation of the aircraft transient apron at the Medina Municipal Airport.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
Emergence clause been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause? The discussion that Mr. Huber mentioned goes with this ordinance as well. Is there any discussion on the emergency clause or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordinance 5616, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Medina County Board of Commissioners to provide fixed route public transportation services within the City of Medina for the period of January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
Emergence clause been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause? Discussion on emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is in regards to materials for an emergency culvert repair. It is being done after the repair because it was an emergency, it wasn't planned, and the emergency clause is because the materials have already been provided, we want to get the vendor paid.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Colosar?
Because the company in question here does business with my employer, I will abstain.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Abstain.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passes six yeas, one abstention.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Abstain.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 5516 passes six yeas, one abstention.
Ordinance 5616, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Medina County Board of Commissioners to provide fixed route public transportation services within the City of Medina for the period of January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016.
Move to approve?
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergence clause been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause? services within the City of Medina for the period of January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. These fees, $45,000, $11,200 is from grants, and $33,800 is from the general fund, and this provides the transit service in the City of Medina, both on-demand and fixed routes, and it's a great benefit to our residents to continue this service. The reason for the emergency clause is the grant period started January 1st of this year, so we're about four months behind in getting it paid.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Ordinance 56-16 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 57-16, ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids for the renovation of the Memorial Park Pool and Pool House.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Colosar.
I just want to make a brief comment, and I'm excited to see that the Memorial Park Pool, Pool House has taken one step further to hopefully finally renovating that and putting that back in place for our community. I believe it, I know there's mixed opinions on it, but for myself, I believe it plays a large role in the summertime for kids and families to have the opportunity to go out and enjoy the summertime here in Ohio, especially through a hard winter. It's nice to get outside and spend some time with the family at a pool that's in great, will be in great condition, and I believe it's an asset to our community, and I ask for all council members to support this legislation and future legislation to get our pool open. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton.
Thank you. Yeah, this ordinance is for actually two projects at the pool. The first is the Pool House, which will be bid separately from the renovations to the pool. The budget for the renovations to the pool is $700,000. I did want to point out as well that as opposed to other ordinances where we are authorized to advertise for bids, we are not authorized in this ordinance to award the bid through the Board of Control. Those bids, when they come in, will be presented back to council for their review and discussion.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
Mr. Colosar said things very well, but I want to just echo that as well, and thank everybody's worked on it. I know Pat and Mike and Jansen have put a lot of time into this administration. We appreciate that it can go out to bid. I know we continue to look at other options, but this at least will give us a good handle on what kind of prices we're looking at when we get the bids back. So thank you for keeping this moving, and thanks to everybody for trying to get this pool reopened. It's been a long process to get to this point, so I'm looking forward to seeing our numbers here and then proceeding from there.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb.
Right. Let me also say, you know, Mark, it couldn't have been said better. I 100% agree with you, and I am hopeful that this is the first step in actually getting us to an outdoor swimming pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
No.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Ordinance 57-16 passes six yeas, one nay.
Ordinance 58-16, ordinance authorizing expenditure of $50,986 to gain time for the installation of a poured-in-place rubberized playground surface at the Sam Massey Park, repealing ordinance number 916 passed January 25th, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance 9-16, which we're asking to be repealed, authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids for the Sam Massey Park playground surface. While researching specifications for that surface, as well as talking with other communities, it was recommended and discovered that we could use a cooperative purchasing program, U.S. Communities, that would also include a five-year warranty on the installation. Division of Natural Resources Office of the Real Estate permits us using Cooperative Purchasing Program for our Nature Works grant. The emergency clause is requested so that we can execute a contract and install this summer, because we have a deadline with the grant requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 58-16 passes seven zero.
Resolution 59-16, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership agreement with the City of Brunswick and to file an application for grant assistance with the Ohio Department of Services Agency for the Fiscal Year 2016 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, CHIP grant.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on emergency clause and resolution. Mr. Mendel.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership agreement with the City of Brunswick and to file an application for grant assistance through the state of Ohio for the next round of community housing impact preservation program grants. This would also, the ordinance also provides for the contract with CT Consultants to manage the program as it has in many years prior. This is, partnering with the City of Brunswick allows for a total of $800,000, $400,000 per community, basically, to do various types of programs within the grant as we go through this grant cycle. That would also allow, in the partnership agreement, the City of Medina would continue as we have in the last partnership agreement with the City of Brunswick, and Rodsworth will be, the City of Medina will be the grantee and manage all the administration and distribution of funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the resolution?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colosar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Resolution 59-16 passes seven zero.
Council comments. Mr. Hilberg.
Mr. President, thank you. This is in regards to comments that Pat Patton made about the road construction on North Huntington Street, and actually it pertains to any roads that are closed. I just want to remind drivers that those signs are posted for a reason so that you can't drive down that street, because it's closed. I got a few phone calls over the last week from people that were displeased that they were sighted, but when you ask them if they actually ignored the road closed signs, they admitted that they did. Having said that, I just want to please ask drivers not to go around the, they placed road closed signs a block in each direction from those intersections, and in the past several weeks, people have come around those closed signs to come up to the intersection to still make a turn. As of today, there is no intersection at Homestead and Huntington anymore, so if you try to go around those signs, you're not going to go anywhere. Several of the neighbors in that area have had constant traffic pulling in and out of their driveways all day long, trying to turn around, go back the other way. So please don't disregard the road closed signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional council comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rose.
Thank you. In tying in with Mr. McCully's comments, Patrick Evans did organize a group of individuals that went out and picked up the 50-some bags of trash along Hillview Way. He couldn't make it here this evening. He is one of my shining stars, and when he can make it here, I'm going to give him and his team the appropriate due, so. But thank you, and thank you, Pat, for the good work.
Thank you. Mr. Shields.